I'd like to call and order this meeting in Rattone City Commission. We have roll call votes, please.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster. Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. Alrighty. We have no visitors tonight, so get on to the other things. All city offices will be closed tomorrow, November 11, 2020, in observation of Veterans Day. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 24, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. Seeing no one here, there is no items from citizens present. We will move into the business part of the meeting. Six A, approval of October 27, 2020 regular commission meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I did have two very small clarifications that I had passed along to Michael Ann. One of them was in your report, instead of SEDS with an S, I just corrected it should be a C since it stands for Community Economic Development Survey. And then at the very end, I just asked that they clarify and add in for the city manager's report, the first item, just state that it is the CARES grant that we're talking about there. And that was it, but otherwise, I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion and second to approve the amended minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, deliberate act on appointment to the Financial Advisory Committee. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission. Apologize. We do have a financial advisory committee that prior to monthly or quarterly or annual reports that come to the commission is reviewed by the advisory committee. They meet monthly and the committee consists of three citizens that are appointed by the commission. Commissioner Chavez has served as the commission liaison and then the city treasurer serves on the committee. And they do a lot of the footwork before those reports come to the commission and really do a great job at that. I want to acknowledge the service of Larry McQuarrie. He served on that board as a commission appointee for a number of years. Mr. McQuarrie has informed us that he will step off of the board. And we do have, we have received an application for this board from Cy Trillo. So you have Cy's application and his qualifications in the packet. You can see that Mr. Trillo is well qualified for this type of position. He holds a master's in business administration. He operates a business here locally, insurance and financial concerns type of businesses, involved with a number of business initiatives here in town and public services as well. He has served on our comprehensive plan review committee and is willing to get involved. So I bring this application to the city commission and you would have my recommendation for the appointment of Cy Trillo to the financial advisory committee.
Alright, thank you. I think he's more than qualified and really, so I'd like to make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the appointment of Cy Trillo to our financial advisory committee. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate act on introduction of personnel ordinance changes relating to Section 33.28, collective bargaining. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, on this item, this relates to Senate Bill 110 that was passed in the 2020 regular session of the New Mexico Legislature. It actually is Senate Judiciary Committee substitute for Senate Bill 110. And this constitutes some 11th hour legislative action, really without much public comment. And it has to do with collective bargaining in the public sector. And the thing I would say is generally, this would remove some authority that currently has been available locally and concentrates that in Albuquerque and Santa Fe. And so generally, rural communities around New Mexico opposed this bill, but it did get passage at the 11th hour in the legislature. And now we really have to acknowledge it. And so our personnel attorney, Deana Holcomb, has worked with the state personnel board as far as a model ordinance relating to collective bargaining. I have taken that model ordinance and Michael Ann Antinucci has taken the model ordinance and brought it to the commission tonight for introduction. It's our understanding that in order to really maintain our local labor management relation board, we would need to pass this ordinance, have final passage of the ordinance prior to December 31 of 2020, and then submit that to the state board. Now, in using the model ordinance, the language has been worked on, approved, vetted. And so the only thing that we have done is we have taken the model ordinance and put in the city of Rattone. You all did receive a revision, revised page with a little typo in it. And what this would constitute is repealing and replacing Section 33.28, which deals with collective bargaining. That section, you'll remember, back in 2016, the commission did revise and they did add provisions for a labor management relations board at that time. This language is essentially the same. There's not really a change on that. However, I think we would have to go through the appointments all over again, and we do that annually at any case. But it's very similar to what the commission had passed back in 2016. We would be replacing that whole section with the lengthy ordinance that you have in front of you, 24 pages. Mayor Commission, we are, set this up for introduction tonight. Upon your consideration of introduction, we would schedule a public hearing and propose adoption of the ordinance at the first December meeting. That will be the second Tuesday of the month in December.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Berry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On the page that we were given, page 18, the new page, in Section G, it has County of Sandoval there.
That would be City of Rattone. We replaced one thing and we snuck another one in on the next.
I just want to point that out, that when we do, that just needs to be changed.
Let's cross that out and put City of Rattone. But this is a model ordinance, which was came down to the last minute there. So we got school board. We took school board out, but we left that.
Yeah, Rattone was on the first time, but then the second time it escaped.
Yep, that's on me.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to introduce personal ordinance changes relating to Section 33.28, collective bargaining. Do we have an ordinance number?
I typically don't assign it until I publish the notice of public hearing and adoption.
Motion and second to introduce an ordinance relating to collective bargaining for the city of Rattone. Any other discussion? My client, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagada?
Yes. Item D, deliberate act on Resolution 2020-59, authorizing the certification of the city of Rattone's 2020 capital asset inventory. We will postpone it at 10:27. Michael Ann.
Mayor Commission, my apologies. I know we've postponed this at the last several meetings, but as I emphasized at the last meeting, it is an important component of our audit. And so it can get to be quite complex when we're adding assets that we've acquired throughout the fiscal year. So what I prepared for you this evening, you'll see in the memo that I've given you, that our annual inventory was prepared by Record Consultants, Inc. That's the same firm that we've used since 2013. This year, they were here March 9 through 11. And I'm thankful that we scheduled it earlier this year than normal because we literally got it in a week, I think, before the COVID kind of hit. So I was glad that we were able to get this done this year. We're one of the few entities, I think, that barely just got in under the wire. So you'll see that the process is the same as in previous years. Our database currently has 1,874 inventory items, and then we have an additional 583 items that are land improvements or buildings. And so you'll see on the subsequent pages I've given you, every year, we do an inventory analysis. And so where I was having some difficulties this year in my reconciliation is I always try to compare my ending balance with the beginning balance of the report. And so we focus on the item classes that are 5,000 and above because that is the capitalization requirement by the state auditor. And so all assets that are 5,000 and above, we have to depreciate. And so the database that we have can do those calculations for us. So you'll see that part of the reconciliation error that I had, we did receive a donated John Deere Baco from Rattone Water Works. They purchased a new one this year. So in speaking to our auditors, when RCI transferred it from the Water Works database to my database, it threw off my beginning balance by that amount. But we're going to account for it in the audit report as a transfer from Rattone Water Works. So we'll probably have another column in our report that kind of shows those interdepartmental transfers because it wasn't a new purchase for 54,110. And I would imagine, I think it's a 1994, so it's fully depreciated. But Jason hopefully can get a little bit more life out of it in his department. And then the other issue I had was the brand new Baco that Water Works purchased somehow ended up on my database. And then it looked like they tried to back it out and then put it back on Water Works. So I was off like another $90,000. So anyway, you know, in the process of just elimination and going through and highlighting and reviewing all my reports, I was able to identify these two items and finally get everything in balance. So you'll see that I've indicated the variance in my beginning and ending cash balances was the $54,110. And then I also take the additions in any disposals, which you'll see I've given you a detailed report on what makes up the additions and the disposals. Most of our disposal items are items that have just been flagged as retired. And we've created like a, I guess, a disposal room where we're just kind of moving some of those assets that as they retire, we're going to need to bring those to you to officially dispose of them. They're really no longer in use. So we're kind of working on that. We've talked about the need to have a city auction possibly, or just gather up some old items that are just laying around and have no use or value to us. So that hopefully can be a goal this year, that's a project we can work on. And also, you know, generate a little bit of revenue from the sale of those items instead of them just laying around in various warehouses and shops. So in this inventory analysis summary, I've highlighted the ending balance items that are my asset categories over 5,000. To make sure that it's in balance, I compared that balance with my depreciation report and my capitalization report, and all three of them match. So I know that it's in balance. But when you look at our asset acquisition of real property, you'll see that I've accounted for $2,285,617 in improvements from the various projects that we had the past fiscal year. We have the Phase 1 of the Great Blocks project. We did a Heart Brilliant paving project. We had a new roof on the education building, the remodel at the fire station, the upstairs. We also did some improvements at the Schuler in the downstairs. And then the big one was the Taxiway A project that was Phase 2, and that was a little over $1.3 million. And then the assets themselves, there's several more pages to that report. You can see all of the assets that we acquired throughout the year. And anything that's 5,000 and above, those are the items that will be reflected in our depreciation report. A lot of these assets, such as new defibrillators, we did purchase 13 new defibrillators this year, so we were able to, fire department got about seven, and then we did the convention center, senior center, city hall. And then that way, we kind of have a standard defibrillator that uses the same batteries and all of that. And then the fire department can kind of keep an inventory because we've standardized those units throughout the city buildings. And then also, they did purchase, I think Dusty was at a meeting several months ago, they did purchase a fairly expensive, it's a CPR. There's two units, they're called chest compression systems. Those are reflected in our report as well as additions. And then, like I said, we've got several vehicles, trailers, some new TVs for the fire station as part of their remodel. And then you might recall that the fire chief, Chris Espinoza, was still here. We had brought to the commission for approval the purchase of new fire hose. And so you'll see there was varying sizes and lengths, but that was just under $100,000 just in fire hose. So that's in the report as well. And then the police department, you'll see the new Toughbooks computers that they got with the legislative capital outlay funding. And then we had several items that Public Works Department acquired this year with the legislative funds that they received, such as a new dump truck. There was a new TV.
Baco, new TV.
Baco.
Mower.
Oh, and a mower. So all of those items are represented in the asset acquisition listing that you have. And then going to the disposal, most of these items are either flagged as retired or we have one item in the fire department that was re-barcoded. The only two items that we truly disposed of were the two items that were traded in. And that was for the purchase of the new cat.
For the Baco.
Baco. So that was the actually, the only resolution that we brought to the commission this year for asset disposal was those two items that were traded in for the new Baco. So is there any questions?
You did a wonderful job, Michael Ann. You really did.
I apologize for having to postpone it, but it's one of those projects where you have to really dedicate time just to this. So we've been working with our audit firm. I think we're on track to have it done by the December 15 deadline. It's been a little bit more challenging this year just having to scan items and upload a lot of documents that I believe they would just forget while they were here. So, but so far, I think it's going well. And so now that I have these reports prepared, I'm going to work on uploading the depreciation reports that the auditors need for our audit report. And so I typically just export all of that into Excel. And so for the item passes that are 5,000 and above, I kind of compile a report for them that summarizes the different item classes for everything 5,000 and above. So we'll start working on that. With that, is there any questions or comments? Certainly appreciate everything you've done. Echo their comments, yeah.
That's good.
So a lot of these items, I'm kind of limited on the number of barcodes that I have in-house, so some of these items will wait until RCI comes again in the spring. They've already called me to schedule dates, so it's kind of hard to believe, but we like to get on their calendar early.
Sure.
And then anything that needs to be barcoded that was recently purchased, they can lay those barcodes away.
Alright, any other comments from Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-59, authorizing the certification of the city of Rattone's 2020 capital asset inventory.
Second. Got a motion and second to approve Resolution 2020-59. Is there any further, any further contact? Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, discussion on proposed capital outlay funding priorities for the 2021 legislative session. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, under this item, we are anticipating the regular session of the New Mexico State Legislature scheduled to start on January 19, 2021. And this will be the 60-day session, so it was planned to run through March 20 of 2021. What I've done here is given you a memo with, just to initiate some discussion, capital outlay request that the city of Rattone would file with the legislature. We would expect that discretionary funding for the legislature for capital outlay will be reduced from the previous couple of years. And then what they're generally saying through the LFC is that from this year, if it's going to be down in the next couple of years, revenues to the state budget will decrease even more sharply over the next couple of years. And so I don't know what that means for capital outlay. I think it will be tighter than in the last couple of years. You'll recall that last year, we were fairly successful in our requests. We were awarded $900,000 total in a couple of different requests. How that works is after the legislature agrees on that, it goes to the governor for consideration. That bill with the Rattone request was signed by the governor. However, at some point later, typically the state will schedule a sale of bonds backed up by severance revenues. And our projects, of course, with COVID, everything really was different. Our projects were not in a bond sale until very recently. We believe that they probably were included in a bond sale at the end of October. We haven't received confirmation on that. If they are, then DFA will send us a grant agreement and we'll bring that to the commission and then we'll be on the clock on those. So even though we did receive an award back in February, it's not actionable by the city of Rattone at this point. And here we are asking for the 21 requests, and this is only for your discussion. I would anticipate that we can discuss it here and maybe take action on it at that first December meeting, I think it's December 8. And that will give you time to get everything together and get it submitted. So I've given you my requests that really track the ICIP that we passed back in September that Jason just passed out to you. I'm really going down the list of the top five projects there and putting the dollar amount in there. And I'll go through those really quickly, but something that we've talked about a number of times. Number one, as shown on the ICIP, is equipment for the police department. That consists of upgrades to our telecommunications and dispatch facility. I'm saying that we need hardware, new operating systems, and computer-aided dispatch software package, records management software, mobile support for officers in the field. We would estimate that upgrading that system is about $100,000. I've talked about the replacement of existing police body worn cameras. That was addressed by Senate Bill 8 in the 2020 special session that occurred in June. That requires police officers employed by municipal police departments who routinely interact with the public to wear a body worn camera while on duty. That's been our policy. We do that at Rattone Police Department previously. Those body worn cameras were provided by New Mexico Self Insurers Fund. We're now looking at some years on that equipment, obsolescence dependability and the ability to store that data that's generated by the cameras. So we would look at $125,000 to upgrade that system. I would recommend that we include that in our request. However, we do have the option of talking again to Self Insurers Fund. It really is in their best interest to participate in an item like that. And so that could be some supplementary funding through Self Insurers. And then, again, I talked about the replacement or the addition of non-lethal or less lethal police technology. Specifically, we talked about tasers. And the police department in our review this summer did say they have taser equipment, but there again, we're looking at really obsolete equipment that we would like to update. Budget $75,000. That would be a total request of $300,000 for police equipment. Number two, drainage system improvements and reconstruction. Couple of components to that. We're looking at some sort of storing drainage in the original town site. We also have these large WPA structures that need attention from time to time. And so what I'm recommending here would be the original town site upgrade, but we don't want to forget about the WPA channels. They're going to need attention too, something we're going to talk about through the, through subsequent cycles. Couple of projects that we really worked a lot on in the last year, two years were, number one, reconstruction of the state highway 72 piece that's in city limits. That's a four-lane piece of roadway that was generously given to us by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Now is our responsibility. Includes a piece of Sugar Reed Avenue, Guadalupe Street, East Cook Avenue. If you don't mind, I just call it the Sugar Reed Avenue project. My recommendation to the commission is that we really don't need four lanes for the traffic volume that we see there. I would like to reconfigure that and convert one of those to a pedestrian and bicycle lane that would connect Roundhouse Park with the state road 72 going to Sugar Reed Canyon State Park. And that will, of course, be a larger project to build a trail there, but this would be the first step in that. That would be the part in town recommended, $400,000 request for that. There again, is a number of avenues that we're pursuing to fund this project, but we would look at capital outlay. Similarly, Frontage Road, East 10th Avenue, we're looking at a reconstruction of that into a commercial section. That would include curb and gutter, sidewalk, lighting, payment rehabilitation. And really what we're doing with both of these projects collectively is trying to improve this entrance to Sugar Reed Canyon State Park and keep up with the improvements to Fisher State Park that's going on in Colorado and make that attractive to our visitors. And that's really a significant development, one of the most that we'll see in our time. And this would be local infrastructure projects that we can do to enhance this southern entrance to the park. Asking for $500,000 for the Frontage Road. And then I've mentioned the document storage facility, recommending a request of $200,000. Those of you who have been around city hall, that's all of you have noticed, we have boxes of documents stacked everywhere. This is a multiple angle item here. A lot of those documents, we need to retain for some period of time, store them. A lot of those documents, we need to retain for some period of time, store them where they're really out of our way, but store them where they're protected from weather, from rodents, from blue printers. When you talk about, we have extensive document storage here now. Ultimately, we would like to digitize a lot of that and not have to store all of that paper. That would be a part of this going forward. We have some historic documents that we have to maintain. We've got some important documents that we want to keep, but storing those digitally would be adequate. And then we have a lot of stuff that can just go away. And so this would be part of that, but then recognize that scanning a lot of those documents ultimately is a long-term answer. So throw that out there for your consideration and discussion. You have the list of really the Page 1, the highest priorities. You'll see that under the five years, this extends to, really everything on Page 1 has a 2022 component to it. And then as you get on the subsequent pages, it's not that those are less important, really, they're just are planned for subsequent years. Mayor Commission will hold up right there, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any comments for Mr. Barry?
I think things look good. I think we've discussed it a little bit before, and it looks like a good priority.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead.
I agree. I think that we put into order, we've talked about before, and they're in the first fight, so I like it. Yeah, it was stressed again during our county, joint county and lead meeting this past Friday about the use of the body cams and the amount of data storage that's going to require, and that's not cheap. So I think we should be keeping that mindful as well, and you did mention that. But other than that, yeah, it looks great. Just in mind that everything you talked about last year in the team.
All right, very good. Any other questions for him? All right, we'll move on to the city manager report then. Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of quick things here. I wanted to talk about the comprehensive plan. Even though we haven't talked about that for a few months, there's been work going forward on the comprehensive plan. There is a draft of the comprehensive plan out now. Jason and myself have been reviewing that. And at this time, we've finished our review. The comprehensive plan committee is, will be next to do the review. We are talking to the consultant on that to schedule the final public hearing. I think that's going to happen sometime in December. That again is going to be a go-to meeting type of review for the public. And we would like to get as much participation from the public as we can. I think at the last meeting that we had, over go-to meeting, we had about 25 people online and actually gave us some very important feedback on it, which we've incorporated into the plan. But we are ready to complete that process. Ultimately, the comprehensive plan will come to the commission for your adoption and your approval. You'll remember that that is being paid for 100% with DFA funds, a grant that was provided to us. So that's a good deal for us. It's a well-written plan. I think it's a good blueprint for the next 20 years of Ratteton. And those kind of things are especially useful to me in giving us guidance and some consensus on where we're going. But we'll try to distribute that to everybody. Pretty lengthy document, I could say. Couple of projects I'll talk about. We'll talk about everything. There's a lot of construction going on. There's a lot of construction pending, starting, being planned. I'll talk about the Great Blocks Project that's proceeding along. Really happy with progress on that. Would advise the public that we have closed the intersection at Cook Avenue and First Street. That, the pavement has been removed. We'll replace that with a stamped colored concrete pavement. That will be closed for a minimum of two weeks. Generally, you think something comes up where it takes a little longer. But we will be closed, and we'll be irritating drivers for about two weeks or maybe longer. After that, by the end of November, first of December, we ought to be wrapping up concrete work on the project. However, we have lighting work, we have more irrigation, we have planting. Some of that will stretch out until next spring. And so we won't close the project out, but it'll start looking like something closer to a finished project. Ratteton Water Works will start a job where they'll replace some water line crossing Ponyo Creek. That's been exposed by erosion, and we would be in danger if we had a high flow in Ponyo Creek with that water line. That is the simmer on raw water line coming into Ratteton. That right now is our source of drinking water. RWW will be replacing that with a new section of high-density polyethylene line that would be poured in under Ponyo Creek. That's going to take some time to get that project in place. And at some point, we'll be tying in the new water line to the old water line, and service for Ratteton will be restricted. I'll keep you posted on that, keep the media posted. However, we would ask the public to be careful with water, with conservation we can during that time because we will have a period where we're doing that work and be limited on bringing water from that route. Conservation's easier in the cold months, so we shouldn't, don't anticipate any problems. We'll prepare for it, but we'll keep you posted on that. Update to the Old Pass Road. It's been some time since we talked about that, but the city and some property owners cooperated in installing a gate that's closer to the Goat Hill intersection. I posted a sign to try to give some direction to the public. I will be moving to block that gate with instructions posted on the gate. So landowners will have access to the gate. Telecommunications and utilities will have access. Emergency services will have access. And any member of the public that wants access simply has to come to city hall, obtain a permit. We'll issue a permit at no cost. The gate will be open. There will be sort of restricted access, but it will be open to anyone that makes that provision to obtain a permit. So that will be taking place, and I'll keep you updated on that. Finally, Mayor, I will say that funds have been dispersed for round one of the CARES Act Small Business Support Rent Process. $625,000 issued to 16 local businesses. City of Ratteton has received reimbursement for the funds from the Department of Finance Administration, so very successful in that process. There are some remaining funds. I believe it's $93,000 remaining. The deadline for applications for round two will be Friday, November 13th. They've got applications up until Friday, November 13th, and we will look at dispersion of the rest of the remaining funds. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any other comments? Mr. Jager?
Yes.
Mr. Gavro?
Commander.
One thing I did want to bring up, and I forgot. During the New Mexico Main Street meeting this past week, we found out that Brenda Ferry was actually nominated for the National Director of the Year Award. She was not successful in making that, but just that she, the fact that she was nominated for it shows the...
She became the state...
She was the state's representative for the national award. So that, she should be recognized for that in a future meeting.
I think we, you know, Brenda is, and we've said it many times, best Main Street director there is anywhere. I think she ranked pretty high in the national competition as well. She's someone that really gets the job done, and so I'd like to brought that up.
I meant to bring it up under the recognition of visitors and space it out.
You know, Mayor, if I could do something, I forgot about tomorrow's Veterans Day, and you know, Ratteton has a lot of veterans. Specifically, I'd like to recognize the service of Commissioner Jabs and Commissioner Giacomo. You know, take a chance, thank you for your service. We have a lot of city employees that have served. We have a lot of Ratteton citizens that have served. So just want to, you know, say thank you to all the veterans in the community.
Absolutely.
One note I might add to that, and thank you for the compliments. But in the '60s, Cofax County was fourth per capita of veterans that served in Vietnam. They were fourth in the nation, Cofax County. And Cofax County has a big history, hence the Little Albergia, the Angel Fire Memorial and all that. Cofax County was fourth in the nation that were serving at the same time.
Just to echo Mr. Barry's comments, we thank you for your service. All righty, anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned.